Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the August 20th regular meeting of the Kenai City Council to order and ask that if you were able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Councilmember Daniel?
Here.
Councilmember Sonar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Axton?
Here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
Councilmember Daughtry?
Here.
Councilmember Cassena?
Here.
Student Representative Tanner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council, before we get to approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with requested additions to the packet. Add to Item B1, Presentation, HDR Alaskan Incorporated Bluff Stabilization Project requested by Administration. And Action, add to Item H3, Discussion Action, Direction to the City Clerk regarding applications for student representatives to council from non-city residents brought to you by the City Clerk. Pleasure, Council. Vice Mayor Axton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda with the two add items B1 and H3 and requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to amend the Agenda or Consent Agenda at this time? Councilmember Askin? With that, we'll go ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 6, 2025, brought to you by the City Clerk. New Business, Action Approval, Bills to be Ratified, brought to you by the Administration. And Action Approval, Purchase Orders and Purchase Order Amendments requiring Council Approval in accordance with KMC 7.15.020, brought to you by the Administration. And that is your Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the Consent Agenda which was just read into the record? Seeing nobody in chamber. Do we have anybody online? No. We'll bring it back to Council. Your unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved. That brings us to scheduled administrative reports. In this evening, we have Bluff Stabilization Project Update with Ronnie McPherson, Professional Engineer, HDR Alaska Incorporated. Mr. McPherson, you have the floor.
Testing. That on. That's red. Great. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel and Council. My name is Ronnie McPherson. I'm with HDR Engineering. I'm at the Anchorage, Alaska office and going to provide a construction update on the Kenai Bluff Bank Stabilization Project. So, just to provide some general project information to start out with, this project is actually a partnership between the City of Kenai and the Army Corps of Engineers. The construction contractor that's performing the work out there that you're seeing currently is Western Marine Construction. Army Corps of Engineers is the entity that's actually performing the construction management. And then HDR, who was the designer of record, is continuing to support the project through design services during construction. So essentially, supporting as questions come up from a technical nature and that kind of thing. So, as far as the berm structure design, I thought we kind of start with what it is. You know, it's a little bit of a unique structure. It's not a revetment in the sense that it's attached to the bluff. And it's not a breakwater in the sense that it's actually out in the water somewhere. Somewhere in between. And so this kind of rock structure, we're calling it a berm, have the typical sections on the left if you like to look at engineering drawings. But the, there's two major sections. Kind of deviate them by saying the armor rock A and armor rock B. And the armor rock A is a larger stone and the armor rock B is a little bit of a smaller one. The armor rock A is near the mouth of the river. And that's because it experiences a lot more significant wave action, ice impacts and things like that, while the armor rock B is a little bit more protected. And so it could use to be a little bit smaller. So, the stone size, in case you're curious, on that outer portion, the armor rock portion, ranges that median weight between 850 to 1600 pounds. That's the armor rock A, with the maximum stones that are out there being around 3200 pound stones. And then the armor rock B, which again is a little bit further inland, a little more upstream on the river, that median stone is somewhere between 550 pounds up towards to 1100 pounds, with the max stone being 2250. And there is a variety of different materials that are making up this structure. What I just talked about there is the armor, the armor rock, which is on the outer part, which is what most people see when they're doing it. But there are actually multiple materials in there. We have like a bedding rock, which is placed on the very bottom of the structure. There's a core rock, which is placed below the armor rock itself. And then we even have a smaller rock that's put at the very top that's intended for kind of creating a little more smoother walking or drivable surface for like a UTV. We're calling that inspection path. And the design of this was really intended to provide a lot of different opportunities for rock sizes. You know, this, the rock that gets put into this comes from a quarry. So it's, you know, blown and have pieces going everywhere. And so the idea is that if we could have a lot of different sizes of stones be put into the structure itself, that makes the yield of the quarry quite a bit more. So you get a lot more of that stone that gets blasted, gets actually used in the construction. And that really brings down the cost of a structure as opposed to maybe doing a big blast and only taking 5% of that material. So just, that's why there's just so many materials to go into it. The design itself is, you know, it's designed to reduce or eliminate erosion due to wave action, storm surge, riverine current and ice. That's at the base of the structure. There's a lot going on with the bluff, as you probably are very familiar with. You've got groundwater, you've got surface water runoff coming down. There's even wind erosion, you know, with wind blowing against it and moving sediment around. But the structure that you're seeing out there is not intended to stop groundwater. It's not going to stop surface runoff. It's not going to stop wind. It's really about, you know, not undercutting the bluff from waves, storm surge, ice, so that it can start to stabilize the toe of it. And then the idea behind that is that the bluff itself will continue to retreat until it hits what's called a quasi-equilibrium slope. And really, that's going to be, you'll know that you're kind of reaching that equilibrium when you have significant vegetation that's starting to form, because that vegetation will start to really hold the sediments in. And a whole lot less sloughing will continue to go down. That's, that's the original Army Corps of Engineers intent and design that was put into the feasibility study before, before it went to the actual design. Let's take a quick question right now. If there's anything on design as far as that goes, it just kind of hit a lot of stuff there. Okay. So, I thought this was a great photo that was just taken a little while back, just because engineering drawings are, can be a little bit difficult to look at if you're not staring at them every day. And so this is essentially a cross-section of the structure itself. And so you can see the armor rock on the outside, which is facing the river. That's a much, much larger stone that you see there. And then in certain portions of the structure, you'll actually have bedding rock that's placed directly below the armor rock, which occurs mostly in the toe and on some portions of the slope. And the toe being the very bottom portion of the structure. And then you can kind of see the core rock at the very top of that where it kind of expands out and allows for some of the bigger stone to be put in there to, again, to increase the yield of the quarry. And then below that, you can see there's a geotextile material down there. That's, that's a two-part. I'll talk about that in a little bit. That's really intended to help with distributing the weight and for settlement issues. And then there is a little bit of excavation that's done to get the toe preset to essentially reduce impacts due to scour. And that, that material that is pulled out is placed on the beach and spread out smoothly so that it's very natural for the, for the river component. So, talking about the geotextile, so, you know, as you're probably very familiar with, the soils out there, if you walk, is really, can be really mucky. You can lose your boot pretty fast. And, and so to mitigate for the soft soils, one of the big things that was done in the design is to use essentially what's called a geotextile composite. And so this is an image of it right here. The geotextile composite is a, is a two-part thing. There's actually a non-woven geotextile fabric. So that's the, kind of the more fabric-y part. To me, I, it looks like felt, but it's a lot stronger. And that keeps the sediment, very fine sediment from moving through, but water can go through it. And then we combine that with what's called a geo-grid. And that's kind of that square matrix type thing that you're seeing there, commonly used in roadways. And that helps distribute the weight and pushes it across. And so those two things combined create a really, really great surface to start to put the rock on and to really, to really minimize the amount of settlement that's going, going to occur. So, the design of the structure is, is required to be built in lips. However, the way that the contractor is constructing it, that's not as much of a critical thing, because they have, they're using essentially what's an access road to move material up and down. And so if you ever, if you get out there and look over it, you'll see that they essentially build up the, the bottom layer, the toe of the structure, bring it up to a particular height. And then they use, they place a, you know, temporary access road and they use it as a superhighway, going back and forth to create, to get the rock down to the structure. And they build themselves back up. And by, you know, having that road just constantly be hit by the equipment back and forth, really consolidates that foundation and creates a really solid area so that the settlement actually doesn't occur. So when they build it to full profile, all that extra weight doesn't really do much at all. And the settlement just kind of stays where it's at. So it's been a pretty good feature of how the contractor is, is constructing it. So, again, talking about settlement, there are seven settlement plates that are installed throughout the, the structure. And they, they look like this. You can see there's kind of a piece of metal pipe that's sticking out, a little bit of some pink on there. That goes all the way through the structure. And there's a big, flat plate that's on the very base. And the intent there is essentially, it goes into place. And so for the long term, a surveyor can go out and basically hit that and understand what the movement of that settlement plate is over time to see how the structure is handling the soft soils. The way settlement generally occurs is you have a tremendous amount of settlement that'll occur, what we call instantaneously. The moment the rock is placed, it will sink down and you'll never be able to capture that from any survey. And so that's not going to capture this instantaneous settlement, but it will capture any sort of that near-term settlement. And then definitely, the intent is to capture long-term settlement to see how the structure is performing. And so, the, as of right now, the, the surveys that are coming in from the contractor are showing very, very minimal movement of the structure itself. And so we're capturing things of less than a tenth of a foot, which is great news, given how soft the soils were. And that was a really big question mark and how the structure is going to perform. So, the inspection path, this is kind of an interesting feature of the, of the, of the structure. This is a city part of the structure. So this isn't actually, you know, and there's that partnership between the Army Corps and the city. This is actually a feature that the city wanted and put into place themselves. And it's about, it's eight feet wide. It has much smaller stone that goes on top of the, the, the structure, that essentially fills in the gaps and then stops. And then now you have essentially a path there. Would not recommend jogging on it myself, but you can definitely walk on it. It's a lot easier to walk than trying to jump from armor rock to armor rock. And, you know, it does a couple of things. One, it provides better traversing of the structure, especially for, you know, continuing monitoring and observation of it with those settlement plates and looking at how the structure is performing. And then it's, like I said, it's eight feet wide with the intent that if you were to do some future work out there, you could potentially have an ATV or UTV traverse the structure. Right now, there is no access to that, to that inspection path for like an ATV or UTV. It'd only have to be from a person being able to walk from Meeks Trail or coming down from Ryan's Creek or something like that. City staff are considering developing plans to develop an access for UTV or ATV. So that's something that's, that was being thought of. However, an implementation of something like that is probably preferred to be done after that bluff itself gets to kind of a significant vegetation. Reason being is because, you know, if you build a path for UTVs or ATVs, keeping public off, that would be pretty challenging, I would suspect. And so by having the structure, by having the bluff have a lot of vegetation and be fairly stable, that makes probably a safer environment if you're going to have public on there constantly, because you have actually very, very easy access to the, to the structure. So that's just something that's being thought through by the city staff currently. And then the, as the, as the bluff continues to set back and get vegetated, there's sloughing that's occurring. And so the likelihood of some sloughing going onto the path, we believe that is likely. Is it going to be, you know, complete overtake of the path? I don't think so. But, you know, it's probably going to be some amount of maintenance if you, you want to have a good trail for UTVs in the future, that you may have to move some material around and things like that. So, structure performance. So the big question, right, is how, how much will the bluff, top of the bluff retreat after the structure is in place? Because again, the structure's intent is to stabilize the toe of the bluff and keep from undermining. And then the bluff itself is going to continue to go back until it gets that quasi-equilibrium point. So, we do have an amendment with the city for their review to, to perform a top-of-bluff retreat analysis. And that analysis is fairly straightforward. What we would be doing is taking an adjacent part of the bluff that has significantly, you know, has good vegetation, but still represents what the bluff looks like. And you can see it here in this photo, where you have the trees and a lot of the vegetation formed, which up the bluff. So that is basically a stabilized version of what we're hoping the rest of the bluff will look like in the future years. So taking what that looks like and then superimposing that along the, the project area. And then that would give you an indication of how much the top of bluff would retreat and then how that might impact assets, roadways, utilities or other properties. So that would be how that would, that particular analysis would go down. And then I did want to kind of show how the structure is being constructed. It's quite ingenious, in my opinion. This is something that, you know, we don't, as designers, we design the structure itself. We don't design how you construct the, the structure. We try to create it as easy with lots of options for contractors to construct it, but we don't tell them how to actually do it. In this case, it's a pretty challenging environment. You have large tides, river swings, you know, you, it's just hard to get a lot of that material on there. So what the contractor has decided to do is they build essentially a temporary bridge abutment, which you can see there left. They build up a lot of the, the structure using the material that goes into it itself. And then they have put a single-span bridge that goes from the, their temporary abutment to a material barge. And then as, that's what you're seeing there with the little maruka, the little yellow tracked piece of equipment is there. And that's the material barge that they're putting rock into. And they'll go across that. And then they'll hit that access road and keep going up and down and placing the material. As they run out of material on that barge, this crane that you see in the background, which is on a different barge, will actually pick up the end of the, the single-span bridge and then allow for a new barge to come in full of material and then place the, the bridge back down onto it. And so they can have continuous material going off and on. So, pretty, pretty great way of going, being quite efficient with getting the rock out there. And they've made very good strides. You can see that they have gotten all the way to Ryan's Creek and are moving beyond that. So they're definitely on stride at this point. Let's see. And then, yeah. So as, what they're doing currently right now is that they've, they are essentially deconstructing that, that bridge abutment right now. And they'll take that material out and then they'll build a new one on the other side of Ryan's Creek, which is what they're doing currently, actually today. And then that's how they'll continue to build on the other side of, of Ryan's Creek upstream. So, this is a video that the contractor took. This, I think, was over the weekend. And I thought it was just really great because it provides a really great overview of where they're at. So basically, you are in this, in this situation on the top of the bluff. You're just downstream of Ryan's Creek. This is the, a terminal that ends at Ryan's Creek. And they're just going to, I'm not sure if you click it or if I click it, but it'll kind of just span out and you can kind of see where, where it goes to. So you can see the inspection path on top of the structure. That's, that's a much smaller stone on the very crest of it. And you can see the temporary bridge abutment there. That's currently, that, that single-span bridge is gone. And today, and they are actually pulling that apart currently. That's, that's basically the status of it right now. So you can get a, get a better view of that material barge with the single-span bridge. So, that concludes the, kind of the update. So again, as far as where they're at, they have completed most, most of downstream of Ryan's Creek. And they are starting on the bridge abutment access upstream of Ryan's Creek. So, I'll take questions.
Questions? Councilmember Daughtry?
So, we had the settlement plates. Is there an acceptable amount of settlement before there should be concern? Or is there some kind of a measurement we should be looking for, like, oh, we exceeded such a percentage, we need to be thinking about repairs?
Yeah, great question. So, the, the structure itself is designed to have settlement. And so the, the crest elevation of the structure is intended to have minimal overtopping, wave overtopping during a 100-year water surface or storm surge event after 25 years. So as of a design life kind of thing. And so the, you know, the concern would be, are you experiencing more settlement that was expected? And that the structure would not be performing at that level 20, 25 years down the line. So, one of the things that will be produced at the end of this construction project is an operations and maintenance manual, O and M manual. And so that will talk a lot about, you know, recommendations on observations and surveying of the structure and to kind of know when something is off and needs to be looked at as far as that kind of thing, like a settlement that's gone too low that we need to be concerned about. But generally speaking, the most extreme settlement happens right during construction. And then you have a little bit more settlement, you know, within the next few weeks. And then after that, long-term, it is very, very minimal and stable. So the fact that we're seeing less than a tenth of a foot at this stage is a really good sign. Thank you.
Further questions? Vice Mayor Axton?
Thank you. Kind of along the lines of what I warned you about. No, actually, the, the berm is, is, it's beautiful. I mean, it is structurally and visually and all of that. So that's very exciting. You know, of course, I'm thinking now to the next phase, you know, for the, for the angular repose that we've all talked about. And you're, you're going to do an evaluation on where that might be. And I was wondering if in that evaluation, you might also give some recommendations or suggestions on how to protect the slope as it's laying back, to vegetate it, how to vegetate it, and grading and things to do and not to do, kind of a user manual for people in the city, you know, along the bluff?
Yeah, I think that'd be a pretty good value add to that analysis as far as looking at where the top-of-bluff might go to and then present some ideas of how you might get to that a little faster or provide a little more stabilization. So, yeah, I think that would be something that we'd, we'd want to add to that, that analysis for the city.
Further questions? Councilmember Savannah?
Ronnie, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and congratulate you on talking about building piles of rocks for 15 minutes and making it pretty, pretty interesting, actually. So, yeah, thanks for coming down.
Further questions? I guess I was wondering, are you, are you on schedule or when do you expect to, to be done? It looks like they're setting up pretty good pace, like you said. And so are they, I guess, on schedule? And when would they, when would you expect that they would be wrapped up?
Yeah. So the contractor has opted to complete the, the construction in a single season, which is very ambitious, I will, I will say. That was not expected from the designer's standpoint. So they, they are really blowing and going, like I said, 60-plus percent complete. Based on what we're seeing and what we're talking with the contractor, it sounds like the, they're potentially going to be complete around early to mid-October. And so that, so I, to me, that sounds like that's, you know, on, on track, because what they wanted to do is complete it in a single season. And so that, there's no restrictions there at all. So, yeah, I would say they're on schedule.
Follow-up question. How, how far up does that armor rock A, that section from the mouth, go upstream? Do you have your rock?
Oh, I don't, yeah. I don't have those numbers. I'll chop my head. It's going to be several hundred feet, so probably 800, how many feet? I'd have to look at that to tell you exactly what it is.
And that part's complete, right?
Oh, yes. All armor rock A is complete. Significant amount of armor rock B is complete, because the armor rock A, B transition happens downstream of Ryan's Creek.
Okay. If you had any significant events that you've been able to kind of look and see how that part is handling the?
No, I don't think we, no.
Have you had any storm events this year on a high tide or anything?
Yeah. Those, those events generally occur in the fall season. So we haven't had the opportunity to see how it performs there. We have had the opportunity to see how some of the structure has performed during significant rainfall. And so far, things are looking good there, because then you can imagine the amount of water coming behind the structure and how does the structure react with a bunch of water trying to get through it. So that's so far, so good on that part.
Very good. Councilmember Daughtry?
So, I think we originally had been talked to about doing it in two seasons. I'm assuming there's a pretty good cost savings by trying to complete it in one season. Are we on schedule or on budget? I would only say we're on schedule, but are we within budget still on the original, from the original budgeting?
So, yeah. So I, HDR is not privy to, to financials, but as far as being in the meetings and that I've been a part of, the, yeah, as far as on budget and on schedule, that is affirmative. Thank you.
Further questions? Yes, thank you for, you know, this is, as you're aware, one of our, you know, longstanding, you know, capital project requests. And seeing it, I've actually had members of the community come to me and tell me, I mean, longtime members of the community, and say they can't believe it's actually happening, which it is. So certainly appreciate you coming in and giving us an update and letting us know where you're at. And is there a chance you could do a, kind of a final wrap-up in, in October around that one, things wrap up?
Oh, I'd be happy to be here to do that. Absolutely.
Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I just want to take a second to introduce Jared Stafford. He's with Western Marine. He's one of, I think, two owners, or I'm not exactly sure his actual relationship. But he's one of the in-charges here with Western Marine. His partner, Patrick, I think, must have just rotated out. I saw him to see the other days. So, but this is one of the contractors with us.
And there was just, just, I know there was a sort of some angst with the Drift Fleet, you know, being able to get in and out of the river. Was that, was there any problems with that? And you guys continuing your work?
I believe that was, because of the way the contractor did their work with having the two, the single bridge abutment, it It really eliminated a lot of that issue with trying to go around the mooring buoys and things like that. It made it a very seamless process.
Perfect. Mr. Frye?
I was just going to add that Western Marine communicated with the processing companies a lot in front of that, especially after we had our meeting over at the visitor's center. And because of the construction method, they were able to kind of see everything and work through it at the start. And I think with the communication we had, everything went pretty well for them on that side of it.
Yeah, I assumed it did. My phone, it wasn't blown up at all, so that would have been a pretty good sign that things weren't going well, especially this year and all the traffic through there. So, awesome. Any further questions? Mr. McPherson? Thank you again.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
This evening, we have no scheduled public comments, so that brings us to unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Springer?
So, I don't know if you guys have seen the September schedule, but it is this long. So, it's kind of crazy. If you don't know what's going on over there, please come look at the calendar because I'm not going to go over every single one of these events. That would be horrible for everybody. But some bullet points, just this Saturday is Industry Appreciation Day over on the Green Strip, so that's always a great event from 12 to 4:00. And then, obviously, Kenai Silver Salmon Derby is going to be happening before we know it, which is crazy to me, but that'll be the 9th through the 14th. I think we're going to have online ticket sales starting next week, but I have to confirm that. And then, the Kenai River Marathon, those are the big, big things happening for us. Some staffing, Brittany accepted a job with a different nonprofit. They haven't announced it yet, so I'm not going to, but it's a really good thing for her. And we did already hire Matty Olson for the position. She is the previous executive director for the Saldatna Chamber, and she took over that role on Monday and is doing nominal already, so, which is kind of what I expected. Other than that, it is busy, 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 and we are excited to have weekends closed again because it's kind of crazy when we're open seven days a week. But other than that, just giving you guys a little update, so.
Thank you, Samantha. Any questions for Ms. Springer? Thank you, Samantha. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Okay, I'll mark you down for public comments. Thank you, Marion. Is there anybody online? Okay, very good. But now, we'll go to public hearings. E1, ordinance number 3481-2025, increasing estimated fiscal year 2025 revenues and appropriations in the general fund. Police Department accepting a grant from the Alaska Highway High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for Drug Investigation Overtime Expenditures. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3481-2025.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3481-2025? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberations from council? Seeing none, court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Axted?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Councilmember Casena?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3481-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have item E2, ordinance number 3483-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the airport improvements. Capital Project Fund accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration and awarding professional services agreements for the Kenai Municipal Airport Apron Pavement Maintenance Project. And I will note for folks that are following along, either online or in chambers, that this was, this is time-sensitive, so we were asked to move this for a second reading, which normally we would have this out two weeks prior, but considering the timeline that we're falling under this, we're trying to get this moved in one meeting. So, it's a little out of the ordinary, so that's what that is all about. And with that, good pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce ordinance 3483-2025 and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? You know, consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, ordinance number 3483-2025 is introduced. Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of ordinance 3483-2025 and request unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion? You know, consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, that motion is approved for a second reading, which we will do right now. This is ordinance number 3483-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the Airport Improvement Capital Projects Fund, accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration and awarding a professional services agreement for the Kenai Municipal Airport Apron Pavement Maintenance Project. Pleasure, council. Your motion to enact?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3483-2025.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number Seeing nobody online or in chambers, we'll bring it back to council. And since we sort of, this is a little unusual, I guess, what we do, I guess I'd ask Mr. Ubank to sort of give us an overview of what we're doing here. Mr. Ubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll speak just briefly to, again, why we're doing this in a double-reading format, and then I'll defer to our airport manager to talk about the project specifics. But the grant timelines that are established by the FAA are very short. They don't fit our typical window of providing two meetings to work through our normal appropriation project process. Because of the provisions in KMC 115070D, we do have the option for appropriations to do these in a single reading. Again, the timeline wasn't conducive to us doing it in two meetings, so that's why we're doing it in one. And then, I'll ask Derek to speak to the actual project itself.
Mr. Rabels?
Yeah, so what this project does is repair the cracks, put a seal coat, and then redo all the markings. And this is on the apron adjoining Taxway Juliet. So, the whole area from the cargo area at the north of the airfield all the way to the south end near Taxway Hotel, or as you see this big snow pile. So, it's a big area and big project. It'll take approximately six, eight weeks to do. And then, also, I just want to add that this is with discretionary money from the FAA, so, you know, kind of a bonus, not our money that we get every year. So, that's why it's important for the timeline, too, and to make sure we do this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from council? Councilmember Dalton?
I'm just confirming, so if we go through this tonight, we're going to be able to hopefully get this done, this for snow flies this year or is this going to be for next year?
This will be for next year.
Okay, thanks for that information.
And just real quickly, is this, we're approving design and the contract as well, the actual contract?
No, we're approving the construction of it.
The construction, very good. Further discussion? Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you. I guess that brings up a question. Next year, we're hoping to be doing the runway as well, and that's probably going to take most of the summer. I was wondering how that is going to be coordinated or does it need to be?
Mr. Ubank?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor Gabriel, council members. I think it's going to take careful coordination. There's going to be a lot of work out there. I know one thing for sure, when we looked at doing these projects, you can't do this type of work on a surface that's going to be rehabilitated. So, that's why the main runway, obviously, is not included in this work, and the parallel taxway is also not included because of its pending work. But you have anything else to add, Derek?
Yeah, I'll just add, it's also broken out into four phases with a majority of the work that would cause interruption being conducted at night and where access to the terminal has to be provided. So, with those four phases, it's going to be okay to work with the runway project. I mean, obviously, not ideal, but we're receiving free money, so it's worth it.
Further comments or questions? Comments, deliberation? Seeing none, court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Axted?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Councilmember Casena?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3483-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Council, we're now on item E3, Resolution Number 2025-53, authorizing contract award for the 2025 CDOC floats purchase. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-53 and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-53? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation, comments? Vice Mayor Nexton?
Just a question on the construction of the floats. That includes the deck as part of the float as well as what's underneath?
No, this is just for the plastic floats full of foam that go under. So, there's four in each one of the floats. They're four foot wide, eight feet wide by eight feet wide by about a foot thick. So, these are just the plastic drums that go on the bottom and get bolted on.
Further comments, questions, deliberation? Councilmember Dalton?
I'm assuming that this will be for next year repairs. Would city staff then be responsible for installing these next summer before we launch the new floats?
Mr. Frye, through the city manager?
So, we've already purchased all the lumber and hardware. The plan is for our streets department with our buildings department to work on building these this winter, assuming that we have time and we don't get crazy amounts of snow that causes us to be on the streets all the time. That's the plan, is for us to be kind of a side project for everybody to work on in the shop and the streets department over there in the winter. Thank you.
Further comments, questions, deliberation? Seeing none, you know, consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-53 is adopted. That brings us to Resolution Number 2025-4053, authorizing the application to the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for the state revolving fund loan from the Alaska Drinking Water Fund and execution of a loan agreement for the water treatment plant pump house project. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-54.
I'll second.
Requesting unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-54? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation, comments from council? Vice Mayor Nexton?
Thank you, Mayor. We've done one of these before, and we talked about it quite a bit, but I thought perhaps the city manager might want to talk about the loan that's really a grant.
Mr. Ubank?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, through the mayor, council members. I do want to take a minute to talk about this one because quite a bit has evolved since we had the initial discussion about the $1.2 million forgivable loan we got, offer we had from the state revolving loan fund. As we got into design and got our latest cost estimation for the project, we originally appropriated $1.2 million for the project. The latest cost estimate is $4.4 million. I will say that that $4.4 million also has about 25% contingency for the construction phase, so about $800,000 worth of contingency in that. But we initially appropriated $1.2 million of water and sewer fund, the funds, to advance pay for all construction, design, construction costs, with the intent that the forgivable loan would pay the city back. Based upon this new estimate, we're no longer projecting that those funds will be paid back to the city. Our public works director, Mr. Frye, did talk with the revolving loan fund folks, requested additional funding. That's where this additional $1.5 million in 100% forgivable funds comes from. That will bring the total funding through the state revolving loan fund that does not require repayment of the city up to $2.7 million. We have $1.2 million of our funds we've already appropriated, and we may be required to appropriate up to an additional half a million dollars to bring this project over the finish line. I don't know that Leo will have great answers, but I will give him an opportunity to talk about how we go from $1.2 to $4.4 million. I think that's a very logical question. But I just, I wanted to make sure we totally clarify for council because I think, you know, again, when we started down this path, we thought we, the original estimates, and I think they were from our previous public works director, were for a $1.2 million project, and now this is significantly more. So, anyways, Mr. Frye?
Thank you. And like Terry said, I only have so much information available at my hands. So, yeah, I looked at some of the previous applications that were put together when we originally were able to receive the $1.2. But this was kind of a 10-year-old project that was being rehashed, so I'm not sure how much of that was pulled from, you know, previous projects before. This was something that was supposed to be part of, you know, original constructions when this, the reservoir and the treatment plant were all built 10 years ago. So, this is kind of just taking this to the next step and getting it across the finish line. Some of the groundwork was kind of already laid in the project. There's a 16-inch water main that was constructed when they redid the Kenai Spur Highway. That's already in the ground, but it just hasn't been connected on either end. So, we need to do the work out in the field to actually connect that pipe that was put in. So, there's all these kind of little pieces and parts that have been done over the years and planned for, and this is just kind of where it is. You know, things, unfortunately, I would say, probably a lot of the estimate might have been done from previous looking at years, and, you know, COVID and everything that we've seen probably hasn't helped that to a point. Things like just the current estimates for doing a building are over a million dollars just to do the pump house building itself. So, everything else just kind of adds on top of that, unfortunately, to get this project done. But we have added some things at this project that have also added the cost, but we added them in to the amendment that we did with DC, and they're going to be really important things for our water system, adding another backup generator for the pumps, adding some pressure tanks that'll help us keep pressure for the system. So, and the pumps are also going to help with fire flow throughout the town, so, in reducing the bottlenecks that we have in our system. So, I think long-term, it's going to be a really good thing for the city. It's just, you know, we have to unfortunately spend a fair amount of money to get this done.
Mr. Ubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just conclude with council that what this resolution does is it just authorizes the application with the revolving loan fund to secure the loan. You will see, council will see, another ordinance that will actually appropriate those funds that we will have to do prior to going to bid for the project. So, there will be another opportunity for council to look at this project and appropriate that extra funding. This just gives us the authority to apply for the law.
Further discussion? Councilmember Dalton?
I guess, just for clarification, can you kind of explain where this project will be taking place when people are asking about it?
Mr. Frye?
Sure. So, this project will take place at the water treatment plant over, off of Beaver Loop, off of Shotgun Drive across from Beaver Loop. So, inside that fence limits there, there's kind of a space in the corner closest to Kenai Spur where we'd be building the new pump house, and then there'd be a significant amount of piping that would be going in under the ground connecting to our water treatment plant and out in the Kenai Spur Highway connecting to the 16-inch main on one side of the road, also connecting it into our water service line on the opposite side of the road. In addition to that, the planned location for the pressure tanks that we're putting in is our old, I want to say, Wellhouse 3. It's just up the road, so it's just connecting that into the water system just up the highway from our water plant.
Thank you.
Further comments, discussion? Further comments, discussion? Vice Mayor Axted?
Thank you. I, I, I know we need this, but, um, I want to ask the question anyway. Actually, there's kind of two parts, is what, what the cities need of this wellhouse is, I mean, you kind of have a list of things it does, but what if we didn't do it? What are we setting ourselves up for? Just as the city is now, and also, uh, there is a possibility of the L N G plant coming, and I presume that the question is, is, in that need, we'd be way behind the eight ball if we didn't do this, I presume. But if you could kind of speak to those, those two points?
Mr. Frye, through the city manager?
Um, I can try. So I'm, I will say I'm not the, uh, utilities foreman, and, um, there's other people in the city that could probably speak better to that than I can. Um, I know we have, um, some fairly significantly aged pumps that we have down there at the plant, um, that were not installed with the new water treatment facility that went in. So I believe those pumps are over thirty years old that we're using there right now. It's hard to buy parts to replace things, um, and, you know, that just becomes a general issue throughout with aged infrastructure is, uh, if you do get a failure, um, trying to fix that failure when it actually happens can cause significant issues or reduce your redundancy in your system. As far as, you know, if we were to have major expansion in town, um, I'm not sure if this is going to fix an issue like that as much. It's improving our system, but it's, it's, we have a tremendous amount of water supply with the, the wells we have over there in our treatment capacity. So we're not doing anything for improving treatment capacity per se. Uh, we are improving pressures, um, throughout the system to a point, um, but there are still some other bottlenecks depending on where you are in town that we still, that aren't going to get resolved by something like this. So, um, it's, it's a, you know, an, an old system that was designed a certain way and we're trying to improve it the best way we can, um, a piece at a time, if that makes sense.
Further discussion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number twenty, twenty-five, dash, fifty-four is adopted. That brings us to item E five, resolution number twenty, twenty-five, dash, fifty-five, authorizing a contract for management services for the Kenai multipurpose facility. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Axted?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I move to, to adopt, uh, resolution, resolution twenty, twenty-five, dash, fifty-five and requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number twenty, twenty-five, dash, fifty-five? Seeing no, we'll bring it back to council. Discussion, deliberation from council? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number twenty, twenty-five, dash, fifty-five is adopted. That brings us down to discussion, action, um, item H three. Direction to the city clerk regarding applications for student representatives to counsel from non-city residents. You know, I guess I'll just turn it over to, uh, Shelley just to give everybody kind of brief overview of, uh, what she's looking at regarding direction.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Basically, what I'm looking for is direction from the council if they would like to propose any amendments to the current policy based on the requests we're getting. If you give me that direction today, I can bring back a resolution with your direction for council approval at the next meeting. We have requests from a student that is not a city resident for consideration, and our policy is written right now, she's not eligible. Our policy requires applicants for city council be a junior or senior of good standing in a school within the city limit and a city resident. Uh, applicants for our other commissions need to be a junior or senior in good standing at a school within the city, but they are not required to be a city resident.
So, uh, to be clear, the, the letter we got from, uh, Ms. Sylvia McGraw requesting to be, um, considered, uh, is, sort of fits in this category where she goes to a Kina Central High School, I believe, and, uh, but is not a, not a city resident. So, um, that's sort of what, uh, where we're, where we're at. I, I can tell you from past experience, I think, um, Ms. Tanner can also back me up on this, there's been times where it's not, it's not difficult to get a student rep, but there's other times where it actually is pretty difficult, even with her spending, um, a lot of time soliciting for those with the schools within our, uh, our municipal boundaries. And actually, we sort of broke code last year with our student representative Tanner, who was actually a sophomore, and, uh, we agreed to bring on because really, um, and that was a good move. We, uh, we really appreciated the work that he's done here, um, and I'll be speaking to that here in a moment. But, uh, at any rate, it's sort of, I think, broadens the, um, the, the scope of the number of people that would, uh, we could probably consider to fill that role, so. With that, I'll open it up for discussion. Councilmember Cassena?
Oh, thank you. Uh, I was just gonna ask a question of the clerk. If we were to modify the qualifications of student representatives to include juniors or seniors, uh, in good standing at a school within the city limits and, and keep it at that to where it doesn't require them to live in the city limits, would that align it with the requirements for all the commissions as well?
Yes, that would be the same as the cur, commissions currently.
Councilmember Dotit?
Uh, yeah, I would just be in favor of, of this. I think there's lots of great, uh, candidates out there that don't necessarily live directly in the city limits, and they don't really have a choice because that's where their parents live. So I think if they want to be willing to help out the city and be a super student representative as long as they're going to a school within the city, I think it aligns correctly with the other boards of commission. So I'm definitely in favor of this, and, um, I think there could open up a lot of applications out there. I think it could be good for the city to have that.
Councilmember Dana?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I too would be in favor of this, and I'd even be willing to entertain looking at changing it to juniors, senior, and sophomores, since we have such a fine example. So, um, that might be worthwhile to do as well, since we're taking a look at this.
Uh, Councilmember Sonar?
Ditto.
Ditto. Sounds like you got direction, um, to go ahead and change, this is just a policy change?
Yes, and we do that by resolution, so I'll have a resolution and the policy for the council at our next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Tanner. That brings us to commission committee, re, commission reports, I'm sorry, council on aging.
Thank you, Mayor. No report. Trying to catch up here, and, uh, the next, uh, meeting is, uh, pulling the colors here, um, the ninth of October.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
Hi, no report, and the next meeting is in September on the eleventh, I believe.
Harbor Commission?
Uh, no update from Harbor Commission. Uh, next meeting is scheduled for September eighth at six P M.
Parks and Recreation Commission?
The next meeting is September fourth. The August seventh meeting was canceled. Um, so to Thursday, the fourth of September will be the next meeting, so no updates at this time.
Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission?
No report. The first meeting in August was canceled, and the next meeting is Wednesday, August twenty-seventh.
Very good. Beautification Commission?
Uh, no report. Next meeting is September nine.
Can we, we, the parks just had us add a, uh, garden tour work session on the twenty-sixth, so that's next Tuesday. That was, we just put that out, so.
Okay, thank you. On report of the mayor, I've got, um, it's my pleasure to start off, um, my report with a, uh, certificate of appreciation to our student representative, uh, Mr. Tanner, and I just wanted to say appreciate all, um, all the work you've done. You, you were very, um, um, in-depth and very on point with everything that, you know, your job here is to communicate and be a conduit between this, uh, high school, not only our city high school, but the connections and the alternative school, which you did, um, gave excellent reports every week, well-prepared, and, uh, we certainly appreciate, uh, you, you, uh, so you match your sister's, uh, you know, dedication from when she was here, and I just want to take a minute and thank you for that and present you with a certificate of appreciation. Um, further items on the report of the mayor as I did, and I just wanted to say last meeting, I, uh, I, I am sorry I missed that. It wasn't really planned, but we got noticed, or a kind of short notice, uh, notification, um, an emergency opening for sending, um, operation, which was, I think, our first Gilnet opening in like three years. So it was kind of hard not to, to pass that up. So I appreciate, um, uh, Vice Mayor Axted stepping on short notice and taking care of, uh, the meeting for me. And, um, at that meeting, I was going to, uh, announce that I was not going to seek reelection for Kenai City Mayor, and, uh, so it didn't quite turn out the way I wanted because I think through deductive reasoning, since you, everybody would realize that I didn't pull a packet, that they would understand that I wasn't going to run. So I wanted to do that in person, and I, I'm kind of bummed that I wasn't able to do that. And, uh, I know we'll have a little bit of time here, you know, before my last meeting, but, uh, I just wanted to say that it was a, a tough decision to make. I gave it a lot of thought, and I had a lot of support from, uh, a lot of people that I really trust and, and, uh, you know, really appreciate their input and, uh, but, um, when I did my, my pros and cons list of, and I've mentioned this to folks, of reasons to, to stay, um, they, that all kind of came out to all sort of maybe reasons to step, uh, away for a while as well as on those pros, on the pro, con side, you know, we've got a good council. I think, uh, this was one of the best councils that I've had, a pleasure working with in my tenure, um, not only as a council member, but as, as the mayor. And, uh, you know, great administration, um, great staff. I think the city's in, in really good shape, and all those sort of added up to, you know, well, maybe now is a good time to step back and take a break because I, you know, I'm retired and, and leases, my wife's retired, and we want to take a little time to travel, so, um, but I just wanted to say I certainly appreciate all the, uh, working with everybody here, and, and like I said, we got a little bit of time, but, uh, it was a, it was a, it was a tough decision, and, uh, I'm certain that the, whoever follows the nice footsteps will do a fine job and, uh, do the work of the people, so. A few other things that I just want to report is that I was able to, um, prior to last meeting, was attend, um, the hundred birthday party of Ms. Peggy Arness, which was, uh, very fun over at the, over at the, uh, chamber, and, and a lot of people, I was amazed that the number of, that the people in that room, and I said, you know, as I made my comments, I think that there was never a time that, that I think would be hard-pressed to find a moment in time where you had that much history, uh, of the central peninsula, specifically the city of Kenai, represented in one place at one time. Um, if you've ever read the book Once Upon the Kenai, um, virtually, I mean, there was all the old-time families were there, and, uh, so that was just really, really neat to see. And then following on that, last Friday, I was able to attend the, um, the old-timers luncheon over in the, uh, senior center, and, um, really had a great time over there with, uh, some of the families that obviously have contributed to making Kenai the city it has, and, and like, I grew up here, so I'm always appreciative of the, of the, uh, work that they put in to make, um, the environment, uh, so positive for, for me as, you know, growing up here and the opportunities that I had. So, um, kudos to all of our old-timers here who basically set the stage for us. And then, um, lastly, just a few housekeeping items. I was able to attend a meeting today with Mayor Machiki's office, um, which was a meeting with Marathon, and it wasn't, there was really no, the Marathon administration, uh, and there was really no agenda there, it was just sort of a, you know, roundtable talk and things concerned maybe that we had and things that, uh, were concerns for them. Really, really a good meeting. And then I attended the, um, part of the, uh, Kenai Classic Roundtable today, mainly concerned about the discussion regarding, uh, King Salmon, you know, sort of where we, you know, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going with, uh, King Salmon and the future here, uh, because of the effects it's had on so many user groups. So good discussion there, and hopefully we'll have some positive results on that. And with that, I will go to, uh, administration report, city manager, Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. Couple of things to report. I'll start with, um, staffing and recruitment updates. Let's start off on a low point here, so, uh, unfortunately, Friday will be Derek's last day with the city. I want to wish you the best of luck, Derek, and, and what, where you go next, and, uh, we will definitely miss you. Uh, we are, uh, still actively recruiting for the airport manager position. That, that process is ongoing. Uh, I know staff has done interviews for the building official position, and, uh, they're hoping to get a job offer extended this week. Recruitment for the chief animal control officer has been extended, uh, and we have two, uh, openings right now for part-time recreation center attendance over at the rec center. Uh, I do want to welcome a couple of new folks to the city. Um, she, or, we have an animal control officer, Teller Knutson, started last Monday, and, uh, not to steal any of Shelley's thunder here, but, um, Logan Park started in the clerk's office last Friday. So, a couple of things we're working on in administration. Staff are now reviewing, we have an appraisal report. This is appraisal of city-owned parcels predominantly, um, airport parcels that we have under lease. We're reviewing that most current appraisal, um, to work with the appraiser on any questions that we may have before those results get released to the leases. A lot of these leases, uh, the leases, these older leases require appraisal on, um, years ending in five and zero, um, and so we're, we're on that cycle. And, um, so we're doing that right now. My office issued an R F P for, um, doing a community survey. We had fourteen firms respond with, um, proposals to do that survey, and, um, we're, we selected one, we're working with, uh, Provoloski Research, and, uh, right now we're, um, working on developing the actual survey questions, so, uh, that process is moving forward. Parks and Rec Master Plan, um, administration staff have been working to review, um, a couple of the documents they put together for that, get comments back to the consultants. Same thing with the airport master plan, so those processes are moving along, moving along well. Regarding housing here in Kenai, uh, we did meet last week, staff met with, um, folks from, um, well, we, this happened in the past, we met with folks from Capehead, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, uh, discuss housing, um, and, you know, proposed housing shortages and things like that in the city. Capehead provided us some very pertinent data, um, from some of their data sources, and they've also organized, um, some, uh, community-type meetings with, with a lot of experts and things to talk about this, and we really appreciate them engaging with us and, and helping with us, um, further the talks about housing here in the community. Last week, um, councilman, uh, councilmember Cassena and I met with, um, Trent Dodson over at the watershed forum and talked about a few things. It was a good meeting. Uh, I got approached by, uh, our lesee over there at the Kenai Golf Course, our new lesee. Um, they had a, uh, I don't know if council remembers, but a couple of years ago, it was the, the current, the, the previous operator, um, received a grant from U S Fish and Wildlife to do reconstruction of the main bridge between the clubhouse and hole ten. Uh, that was done with some, uh, grant funds, and they come and inspect that periodically. During that inspection, which I think went very, very well, um, it was identified that Fish and Wildlife currently has funds available for similar projects, and, um, the course has applied, um, for, uh, or is in the process, I should say, of applying for that. Um, I did sign a permit application with the River Center for, um, replacement. I think it's the, the bridge, uh, between hole one, both sides of hole one there, so right at the bottom of the hill. And, um, so we're trying to support them in that. Um, they're looking at about a forty thousand dollar cost to replace that bridge, and this, uh, this grant would be half of those funds to them. So, uh, a couple upcoming events council should be aware of. Again, Capehead is doing their, uh, community economic development strategy. They're renewing that. Capehead is doing their Community Economic Development Strategy. They're renewing that. They're having a meeting here in Kenai on Monday, August 25th, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 over at the Kenai Visitor and Cultural Center. The mayor already mentioned this, but the Senior Center did host the annual area-wide Old Timers Luncheon. They had about 150 attendees there. So really popular event, and a great event there. Want to thank staff over there for their efforts on that. And then just want to give council a little update, the Spur Highway Phase 2 job. Okay, so that will extend for the five lane from Eagle Rock to about Sport Lake. And it'll also provide for lighting of the majority of the five lanes. So new lighting throughout there. That was bid, QAP is, I think, was the low response of bidder. I don't know that they've completely issued contract yet, but it looks like QAP. And QAP, if council remembers, is also the contractor that got our airport job, the main runway reconstruction. I'd like to think that those projects probably worked hand-in-hand to, to, you know, help drive down the costs, because my understanding is the Spur Highway job came in very good, significantly under what the engineers' estimates were. So I think that's good value for, for the taxpayers out there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, the City Manager? Vice Mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to just ask how things kind of improved, smoothed out over at the animal control facility. They were closed for a while, they're going to open, and how's it going down there?
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I think so. And I don't think things ever were, you know, you know, upset over there. I think what really happened is, you know, we, we have a staff of three at the shelter. We had two of those positions vacant and open, and we had one staff member remain. That same staff member was with us last year when the exact same situation occurred. And last year voluntarily canceled their personal leave that they had scheduled. Well, they also had the leave scheduled for that 10-day window at the start of this month. Chief Ross reached out to me. We did not, he did not, he asked, he did not think it was appropriate to ask that individual to cancel her personal leave again. And so we chose to, and the only function of the shelter that was closed was the interaction with the public. So public couldn't come in and adopt animals, which they actually adopted all the animals out before it closed, and they couldn't come in and wave animals. So again, I reported that we, we did hire a new animal control officer, Teller Knutson. They started on Monday with that, I guess it was last Monday, and with that person starting, we had two staff there. We resumed normal operations down at the animal shelter. You know, I just think people need to keep in mind that, you know, these vacancies and extended vacancies of staff, you know, it's, it's not just hard on our operations, but it's hard on the remaining staff that are there. And I think this was the right move in the interest of keeping a great employee and not, not pushing somebody over the edge. And I appreciate the question, Vice Mayor.
Any further questions, the City Manager? See, now we'll go to City Attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I will just share a non-legal department thing. I did miss the last weekend, or sorry, last council meeting, because I was up at state coaching our Kenai Kicks U-12 soccer team that won state for the second year in a row, and are now going to play for a national championship next spring. So I'm proud of those girls, and it's a good reflection on the city of Kenai, I think.
Well, that's better than any legal report you could give us. So I'll just go there. Any questions of the City Attorney? Councilmember Cassena?
Just wanted to really thank City Attorney for, for his update today.
Thank you. Thanks. We'll go to the City Clerk, Ms. Tanner.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I wanted to welcome Logan Parks, the new deputy clerk. This is his fourth day with us, and he keeps coming back. I'm grateful. Absentee voting opens on September 22nd through October 7th. It will be here in City Hall and at the Borough Assembly Building. The, also update, in fiscal year '25, we had a total of, through the whole year, 30 public records requests. We're not even through the second month of this fiscal year, and we're already at '22. And we have multiple boards and commission vacancies. It's on our website. It's on our Facebook. We're putting it on the radio. We're trying to fill those vacancies. And also wanted to remind you guys that we have vacancies on the personnel board, which those have to be referred by a council member or an employee. And we had three members last year agreed to stay for a one-year term, because they were, they've been on the board for a long time. So we will have quite a few vacancies on that board at the end of this year. So we're going to be recruiting and trying to get those spots filled. And that is my report, available for questions.
Any questions, the City Clerk? Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Any particular reason that was driving these records requests? Seems like a lot so early into it.
Ms. Tanner?
We're getting a lot more commercial requests, because it's really easy to send an email these days. And we are getting a lot of requests for proposals, bids, from the unawarded applicants. That's where the biggest increase is lately.
Any other questions, the City Clerk? Seeing none, we'll go to additional public comments. Is there anybody from the general public like to address council at this time? Ms. Nelson?
I know some of you just would be so disappointed if I didn't say something here, so you could tease me about it later, if nothing else. So the Kenai Arts Center is still just pu-pucking along over there. And along with the art center that you think of normally, the Potter's Guild. I can't emphasize what a great job. The current draft of potters we have, it's, it's quite stunning. The shows that they've had on their own, as well as generally in the main gallery. So the big deal that's coming up shortly on Saturday, September 27th, you have an invitation in front of you here, council people. And the cost is 50 bucks, which, of course, I couldn't read, since I'm over the age of understanding here, with this cute little design that you have to look up and match up, and so forth and so on. Anyway, yeah, there's a, there's a bias about anybody over 50. They can't participate in lots of stuff. So Harvest Art Auction, there'll be, you may have people coming to your business, if you have a business, or just talking to you individually. If there's something you'd like to donate to this auction, to be part of the auction, they want to talk to you. That's what they're going to be doing in the next few weeks. I am out of that game completely. And this is definitely going to be my last year on the board, and not too much on the board as it is. So that's it. Any questions? Anybody?
Any questions, Ms. Nelson?
Come on.
Sure. Marianne, after you said, said that, I mean, I still expect you, even if you're not on the board, to come talk to us about what's going on down there. You don't have to.
No, I don't think so. I'll talk to, anybody wants to talk to me later, that's fine.
Thank you, Marianne. Is there anybody else from the general public like to address the council at this time? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we will go to council comments, and we'll start with Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. I was out walking the other day, and I was going by the field of flowers. I had noticed that there were some flowers kind of blooming over there, and wandered in. And it's about to explode into full bloom. It's really quite, quite beautiful there, even now. And I looked about a square meter or so in one spot, and there were, there were pollinators all over, tiny and whatever. There's millions of them there. So, you know, the city's not only providing flowers, pollinator thing, and all of that. But anyway, we have about three weeks, probably four, until we get the first post, to talk about that. But, you know, anyway, suggest you get out there, get some photos, and take a look around. I also attended the Old Timers Luncheon. Brian was there. And something I really enjoy doing a lot, and a lot of good, good times there. And they had several folks that were 100 years old, and kind of did the math, they were about 35 when I was born here. And they were, they were movers and shakers then. And all the way through my life, as we moved through time, and now they're 100 years old, and they're, they're still doing stuff, you know? So that just hasn't, hasn't changed. But anyway, just amazed of those people and everyone else. And it also gives an opportunity to talk about and remember those that aren't able to come back, because they're not, not with us any longer. But a very, very good time. Looking forward to this weekend. Industry Appreciation Day is Saturday, and that's always a good, good thing to do. And according to Jackie Purcell, on Channel 2, it's going to be a nice sunny day.
Wow.
You know, so she, she never, never lies. So anyway, I expect that to happen, and hope to see you folks there that evening. The Food Bank is having a fundraiser, something. I try to attend myself as, as we, you know, move through the year. So and, and to close, I just wanted to welcome Councilmember Dothet to the, to the mayor race sincerely. And my thought about all of that is just, literally is that it's, it's good for the public to have a choice, you know? It's just one, it's just one, and then, you know, what's the point, in a way? But I think, I think good things will, well, it would have been nice, in a way, but I, I really think that it's best to have, have a race. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Cassena?
I really enjoy an unopposed race myself, but, you know, everyone has their thoughts about it. I did, I did want to sincerely thank Derek for his work here.
I'm very sure.
One vote. So thank you, Derek, for all your work. I enjoyed the presentations you've given. And yeah, it'll be a bummer to see you leave, but I wish you the best of luck. And then Logan, welcome, and look forward to working with you, and hope you have a great time. I'd also like to thank the clerk's office for using technology to let me attend remotely last meeting. So that was neat. So yeah, thank you for letting me do that.
Councilmember Dana?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, welcome, Logan. Looking forward to getting to know you. And Mr. Abels, we really appreciate your efforts. It was fun getting to know you on the Airport Commission. I wish you well. Also, on a lighter note, depending on who you are, school has started. So half my kids were super excited. One of them was not so much. The one was right in the middle. So I got one in kindergarten, and one in high school, and yeah, one in the middle school. So all sorts of stuff, anyways. But yeah, so it's the end of summer, and I'm kind of sad about it.
Councilmember Asken?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to the soccer team. That's amazing. Welcome, Logan. Look forward to working with you. I also attended Peggy Arness's birthday, and I got to see a little bit more historically how the Liberty ships had gotten, landed there for the dock. And I worked on that dock. And little-known fact, there used to be a meter inside one of those ships that we had to go in and calibrate. So that was kind of cool. Set netters, I was happy to see you got to fish this year, as little as you did, but you got to fish. And best of luck to you, Derek. I've enjoyed working with you very much.
Thanks.
And I'm going to go to Industry Day. I'll be giving out snow cones.
Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. First, to Mr. Abels, thank you for your service to the city, and Godspeed in your next endeavor. Let's see. Logan, welcome again. We're excited to have you, and we're excited to have your, your position filled. That's pretty awesome. And to Mr. Bloom, congrats on the soccer team. That's pretty cool that you're taking the time to coach and to do that. And we, we need people to make, to make an impact on young people's lives, because that's, that's where it's at. Mayor, I was glad you were not here at the last meeting. I mean, okay, that didn't come out right. I knew you were fishing. Okay, let's go with the fishing. I knew you were fishing, and I was excited that you were finally getting to fish after three years. And I too have been enjoying the flower field. It's about a mile from my house, so about every other night, I take a two-mile walk from my house to the flower field. It's kind of the apex of my walk. And I walk all the way through it, and turn around, and make a U-turn, and come back home again. And I've watched the progression of the flowers, Mr. Naxted. Pinks were about three weeks ago, and now, if you notice, the blue bachelor buttons are going to town. It must be a stag party out there. But anyway, enjoy the last of summer.
Senator Representative Tanner?
All right. So for Connections Homeschool and Kenai Alternative, I have nothing to report. For Kenai Central High School, on August the 22nd, is girls freshman, junior varsity, and varsity volleyball at Kenai Central High School versus Seward High School. On August the 22nd is coed junior varsity and varsity football at Reddington High School. On August the 22nd is a cross-country race at Soldana High School. August 27th is School Picture Day. August 29th is coed junior varsity and varsity football at Homer High School. August 29th is also coed varsity swim meet at Kenai Central High School. August 29th is girls freshman, junior varsity, and varsity volleyball at Soldana High School. And August the 30th is a cross-country invite at Homer High School. So.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Councilmember Dothet?
Wow, being at the very end after all that is a little intense. But I would have to say, that's the first time I've seen Mr. Tanner's voice shudder just a little bit when he mentioned Picture Day. So it must not be your favorite day of the whole year, I'm assuming.
I won't be here for it.
So I went to, thank you for your report. It was very good, as always. They had Alaska Oil and Gas Associations, they had a luncheon today, kind of giving their updates. It was pretty interesting to hear, a lot of positive news coming out. The forecast, the 10-year forecast, has increased production statewide, which is awesome. They just got those reports out. So it's great to see that. It was very enlightening. Some interesting news for Hex, Hex Fury, here has, just got a couple of new wells online, and they're really, and then they had an old well they were able to bring back online that has been kind of shut in, busy with water. And it's a, it's a 9 million cubic foot of gas a day well. It's one of the biggest ones in this, in the Cook Inlet right now. And it caused their production to go way up. And so they were pretty happy with that. So they've got three really good wells, new, new wells producing. And so that was exciting, to see gas coming, new gas coming to the, the Kenai. And they were very ambitious with future plans and hopeful for even more gas to be coming out of that platform. So it was really interesting to see that. Like the, let's see, yes, the fuel, the, the school started today. It was the first time I had one not starting school today in a long time. So my oldest was not going to school. He doesn't go till September. But that was kind of interesting nuance for me to have one not starting grade school, for sure. And then we were able to thank you to the Kenai Fire Department. We were able to have, one of my kids took the fire truck ride today for his first school, day of school. So that was pretty neat. They were able to, to drive the fire truck. It did have a couple neighbors texting me, all concerned, is there something going on at your house? Are you okay? Is everything all right? Because they're not used to seeing a fire truck driving down the neighborhood with lights on. So that was fun for them, to be the first day of school with a kickoff like that. So thanks again, those, those rides that they donate to the different funds, fundraisers throughout the community are a big, big success. It's a lot of fun. So we were able to purchase one at one of the fundraisers last year and use it this year. So that was, that was awesome. Be it, I'll be there at Industry Appreciation Day, here coming up. And hopefully, like always, it's a beautiful day. I know the Chamber will be giving out watermelon, as always, and should be lots of good food and entertainment and stuff going on. So and then just lastly, just thank you for everybody that put in for the different elections. It was nice to see Kenai had multiple people putting in. It's always good to see that. It's always exciting time of year, and I look forward to the upcoming election season. And I think Mrs. Grimmy is here, and just like to shout at her, thanks for putting in, putting your name out there. It's a big decision to put your name out there. And it takes a lot of ambition and a little bit of fear to overcome to do it, I'm sure. So anyway, thanks to everybody doing that. And another weekend, next weekend, an anchorage of football for me. So yay.
Thank you. And so just before we conclude again, Mr. Abels, thank you for all your work here for the city. And Mr. Park, welcome aboard. Seeing no-